Okay, good morning. I'll call to order the January 7th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Haywood County Board of Commissioners, and we will do our Pledge of Allegiance, and after that, I'm going to ask our Chaplain Reverend Patrick Womack to come up and give our invocation. So if you please rise for the pledge.
Almighty and everlasting God, our Father, we gather on this day rejoicing and giving thanks to you for the sunshine above and the beautiful blue skies and these mountains that surround us forever reminding us that our strength comes from you. Please bless this meeting, we pray, that you may grant to these our commissioners and all who serve in county government wisdom and discernment in making decisions both great and small. Bless, oh Father, that the outcome will be your will accomplished on earth even as you have ordained it in heaven. We pray that Haywood County may continue to be a place where neighbors love one another, but where we love you above all. And we ask, oh Lord, that if this nation and this county endure for a thousand years, may it be said that Haywood County would be Exhibit A in the great retinue of evidence, that this is the land of the free and the home of the brave. Grant to us, oh Lord, your grace that we may do your will, for we ask in the name of Christ our Lord. Amen.
Okay, our first item of business will be to approve the appointment and contract for a new county attorney, Frank Queen. We talked about this in a closed session at our last meeting, and the contract was in your packet. I just want to, I guess, read some of the contract, if that's okay. Give you a little bit of information about Frank. Frank was born in Waynesville, and he attended the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill where he graduated from law school in 1976, and he's practiced law in Waynesville continuously since the summer of 1977. His legal experience has ranged widely over the past 42 years. He was the town attorney for the town of Waynesville for two years. He was the advisor to both the town manager and the Board of Aldermen on all issues that arise in local government, including contracting, employee issues, litigation involving condemnation for water and sewer department. He was the primary outside counsel for the Old Town Bank until it merged into Integra. In that role, he advised the top management of the bank on loan collection procedures, including foreclosures. At the direction of the bank officials, he also worked directly with borrowers on troubled loans, seeking solutions to both protect the bank's interests and the investment of the borrowers. For about the last 12 years, he's been the general counsel for Haywood Electric Membership Corporation, where he advises the Board of Directors and the managers of the utility. HEMC is a member-owned electric co-op with a unique legal status, similar to a nonprofit corporation. He has dealt with employee matters, easements, and litigation. He meets monthly with the Board of Directors and regularly with the Board's committees to anticipate issues and resolve problems. For the last couple of years, Frank has been outside counsel to the Eastern Band of Cherokee Indians Office of Internal Audit and Ethics. In that role, he has been closely involved in drafting and revising the new ethics code for the tribal government. He has worked with the leadership of the office to establish policies and procedures for workable administration of the new ethics code. He has advised in specific cases involving employees of the tribe who have brought matters to the Audit and Ethics Committee. In private practice, Frank has represented employers, defending the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission complaints at their office in Charlotte, and has represented employers in federal wage and hour complaints. While his practice in recent years has focused on corporate advice and counsel, Frank continues to litigate civil matters where his clients' interests are involved. As an experienced lawyer, Frank Queen was called upon to serve the Local Bar Association as its president. He served for nine years as the Director of Legal Services of the North Carolina, which is North Carolina's provider of legal services and civil matters to poor people, and ended that service as its Board Chair. Frank received a rating of AV preeminent by the Martindale-Hubbell Attorneys Peer Review Organization, its highest rating. As far as Frank's qualifications, as far as the cost of proposal, the role of county attorney involves different levels of involvement by the attorney. He proposes a two-prong fee structure for regular service to the board and county leadership, his attendance and advice in regular meetings, that would be all regular and specially called commissioner meetings, regular weekly staff meetings, and bi-weekly chair and staff meetings. He will provide routine advice and counsel to the commission, county manager, and department levels, and he will also provide routine contract and document preparation and review. His office hours at the county administration office would be to meet with senior managers, especially in the first three months of the position, to establish a sound working relationship, assistance to the commissioners and the county manager in dealing with outside legal counsel in the specialized area of their expertise, such as litigation, human resources, and so on. He will coordinate with the inside counsel and retain counsel at the Sheriff's Department and Department of Social Services. For these routine services, he proposes an annual retainer of $80,000 per year paid in monthly installments in advance. For special projects assigned by the county commissioners or county manager, budgets to be established for each project, if possible, as soon as the scope of the work can be established, budgets to be based upon the expected complexity of the project, the time expected to be needed, and the resources required. Payment for the special projects usually to be monthly in arrears for the services of that month on the project, but might be staged in payments on a fixed fee. So that's Frank's qualifications and his contract. Does anybody have any comments? Would someone offer a motion to approve the appointment and contract of Frank Queen as county attorney?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Are you hearing none? I'll call for a vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, at this time, we will have Frank come forward in a register de Sherry Rogers, and Sherry will swear Frank in to office. Aye, Frank Queen.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as Haywood County Attorney, so help me, God. Aye.
Frank Queen.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me, God. Aye.
Frank Queen.
Do solemnly swear that I will well and truly serve the state of North Carolina in the office of Attorney for the State in the County of Haywood. I will, in the execution of my office, endeavor to have the criminal laws fairly and impartially administered, so far as in me lies, according to the best of my knowledge and abilities, so help me, God.
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Thank you for the opportunity to serve. I want to take one second and say how much I have appreciated the service of Chip Keon to the County of Haywood for the last 47 years. Chip has served with distinction, with energy, with competency, everything that a client could hope to have from an attorney. When I came to practice, Chip was the county attorney, and he'd been the county attorney for five years when I first started practicing. I got to know him personally, I got to know him as a professional. I have admired him more than any other lawyer that I've ever practiced with, ever known, in this state. I appreciate the opportunity to step into his shoes, 46 years and 364 more days till I can equal his term of service.
Thank you, Frank. And I'll just echo those comments. I've known Chip since I started practicing land surveying in 1985, and Chip was the county attorney then, and he was also a real estate attorney, and being a land surveyor, I deal with a lot of real estate. And Chip was always a pleasure to work with, and he definitely served the county with honor and integrity all those years. And also, Frank, we appreciate you wanting to step up and provide your service for the county. At this time, I have worked with Frank along those same lines, mostly in real estate, because that's what I do, work with attorneys on is mostly real estate matters, but Frank has always been the... Most attorneys respect Frank's opinion, and he's always been one that they respect his opinion on land matters and legal matters pursuant to titles, and so we appreciate you helping us out, Frank, and I know you'll also do likewise for the county in that service also. Does anybody have comments?
Well, I would like to say that, and I echo your comments about Chip, certainly appreciate his service that he has provided over the last 47 years. Chip actually was the first attorney that hired me, hired me for my first job 24 years ago, and so he brought me into the firm when a couple of the others weren't sure about doing that, and so it worked out well, and then he and I were partners when I became a commissioner and could no longer be partners together. And so, because of the fact that he was the county attorney and I became a commissioner, I certainly appreciate the mentor that he has been to me over those years, as well as Frank. Frank's a mentor of mine as well. I've been very fortunate, come back to practice in Haywood County, and at the time that I did, there were very few new attorneys coming in, so I was able to get the attention of many experienced attorneys, and Chip and Frank were two of those. We certainly appreciate all that Chip has done for us. He was a very experienced attorney, had a lot of knowledge of the county, as well as assistance to us in Raleigh, and he will be missed, and we wish him well.
Thank you, Kirk. Anybody have any other comments at this time? Our next item of business will be the call to public hearing. It'll be a request for public hearing on January 22nd, 2019, at 5:30 in the historic courtroom of the historic courthouse in Waynesville, and David's going to go over the two businesses that will be talking about tax incentives.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hope everybody's doing well. Finally glad to see some sunshine here in Haywood County for the year. Asking for a call to public hearing for two companies. One is 11th Hour Brewing, which is the parent company of Boojum Brewing. This is one of the first companies that Ira Dove and I first went to to discuss the new incentive plan back in June of 2017, and what they have done and their growth that they have done in Haywood County and what they have exceeded all expectations. So part of our incentive plan that we developed in 2017 was that we lowered the guidelines down to create new small business attraction and expansion. And so what Boojum did was they expanded their cannery. They went from hand-producing cannerys to a multi-line of product, offering six to seven different products that they put on the shelves in Ingalls. So their expansion was $967,000, and they actually, we talked on Friday, and they're going to grow some more. They've added two employees beginning in 2019 for the expansion. Here, when we first did our write-up, they had added six employees, and they've added two more since then. So they are a growing company. So I respectfully asked for a public hearing for the incentives for them, and what that would be. The first tier of this was $500,000 with five employees, and what they have done is $667,000 and added six employees when we first started writing this, they've added two more since then. So they would qualify under the incentive plan. The next one is Evergreen, but back in 2014, Evergreen, and former, the agreement is under Blue Ridge, what they went with the Department of Commerce and under the JMAC or Jobs Maintenance and Creation Bill, signed in 2014, we created a $50 million incentive plan coming from the state. Part of our cooperation with that retention plan was to give up to $20 million in value of credits, incentive back, grant backs on credits for that. 2017, they did roughly about $17.4 million, and since then, they've added another 1.9 that strictly goes back to the Buller Agreement, and Mr. Long can further talk about what that expansion's meant down there for turning that company greener. So this was a part of that. This is a formality, we agreed to back this in 2014, but per the statutes, we have to go through the public hearing. But like I said, we did approve the one in 2018, and this was, they added some more value to that, and this agreement lasts 10 years, and so it started in 2014, so this will run till 2024. Okay. Anything else?
Anybody have any questions for Dave on this? I just want to make a couple of comments. It's interesting that we redid our economic development package, as David said, a few years ago, and we wanted to attract smaller business and help smaller business and not just the big business, and so we have a new emergence... What's interesting about these two incentives is we have a new emerging business that is just starting and hasn't been here that long, and so we're applying it to that. And then we have an old business, that's really a century-old business in Haywood County, big business, which is usually what you think these incentives are supposed to be for, and we're helping them. So it's a good cross-section of businesses, and the one thing about the Evergreen is the using propane now to, instead of coal, is making the air cleaner, and that's really helped. If you'll notice, we just, the state just allowed us to, on emission testing for vehicles, they took us out of having to do that, and I guess Brandon probably knows the technical term on it, but he doesn't have to do that anymore. And a lot of it has to do with propane, and one of the biggest businesses in our area that, I don't want to say pollutes the environment, but you have air emissions was championed, and now that they're not doing coal and they're doing propane, from this expansion is really helping the air quality in our area, and that's a great thing. So that's some of the things that I kind of noted from this incentive package.
Also, to recognize Evergreen, last year, they were picked as Business of the Year for their efforts that they have made to make a greener and cleaner economy here in Haywood County, so they're recognized by the Chamber as the Business of the Year. They're making significant strides towards this, and they're a valued partner in our business community with the financial and charitable contributions they make throughout Haywood County. They're a great resource to have.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments they want to make?
I just want to comment for those coming to the public hearing prior to, is that basically what we do is, on this incentive package, is we take the value of the amount of the investment, which is new value to the company or the personal property, and the tax on that new value is actually paid into Haywood County, and then the incentive is, after they pay the tax into Haywood County, we reimburse Boojum 40%, and we would reimburse Evergreen 50%. Boojum for the next five years, and Evergreen for the next seven years. So I just want to make sure that people know, it's not on the value that they already have, it's the new value, and they pay that tax in, and then the county reimburses them. So it's not anything that's coming from the county's coffers or the county's money to pay to them. It's actually their money that we're giving them back.
Okay, thanks Kirk for that explanation. Okay, we need to vote to have the public hearing, so would someone offer a motion to approve or to request the public hearing for January 22nd, 2019, at 5:30 in the historic courtroom?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? Okay, those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, thank you, thank you, David. Okay. Okay, our next item of business will be our public comment session, and speakers have three minutes to speak, and I have one person that signed up, and if anyone does want to speak after Steve Robertson, I believe, if you want to come on up and maybe state your name and where you live, and then after he's done, if you have comments that you'd like to make, you can step up, just raise your hand and I'll recognize you, and you can step up. Good morning.
Thank you. My name is Steve Robertson, I live in Brandon Forest. I appreciate you permitting me to present my perspective relating to the Haywood County's broadband initiative, attempting to adhere to my time limit. I'll preface my presentation by letting you know I'll ask three questions, who, what, and when, provide the why for these queries, and close with a reminder of the reason for my presentation. Since 2015, I've been a member of the Haywood County Economic Development Council's Broadband Committee. Due to several concurrent personnel, job, and responsibility transitions, we haven't had a meeting since 2017, so I'd like an update. Next, I'd like to know who's on first leading the solutions for broadband here in Haywood County, and when is the next meeting? The last meeting was in late 2017, when the government engineering provided survey results detailing the locale of all of the fiber, even dark fiber in Haywood County, so we haven't had a meeting in quite a while. The why: Personal interest, North Carolina Digital Learning Plan and Economic Development impact. Like I said, I live in Brandon Forest, three houses in the last six months, one in front and one in back of me ironically, had to go to a second cellar due to poor internet. That's a material fact, as you probably know. I'm considering real estate, but I can't do it from my house due to the slow speeds, including many times daily when I can't even connect to the server. Streaming options are not available either because of the slow speeds. Brandon Forest's specific initiatives include a previous Carolina Cablevision quota of $500,000 to run the line a half mile up the hill. Despite discussions with the AT&amp;T North Carolina President and follow-up with AT&amp;T Atlanta, Brandon Forest is not even on the waiting list, and Spectrum cannot justify an RIA decision to serve Brandon Forest. The North Carolina Digital Learning Plan, by what I read, it was to be implemented by 2018. Obviously, that's not going to happen in Haywood County due to the poor service. I want to give special thanks to Joey Webb Jr. and Mike Sorrels for setting up community centers with better internet so students can go sit in the parking lot and get and do their homework at least. Other poor internet impacts: Call Center Initiative on Newfound Road was unable to move forward. Several others I learned of during my broadband committee meetings. And obviously, you're well aware of this lot on Jonathan Creek where you're putting in fancy dirt. I hope you all checked and make sure there's internet service there, because no company will want it if there's not. In closing, seem odd in closing, back in 1982, during my Peace Corps service, we had a meeting with USAID, where we learned that communication was the main key to improved development, not just economic development. Being married to a Filipina, my last visit back to the Philippines was in 2007. My family home in Rosario, La Union had an internet cafe. It's embarrassing for me to have to say that they had better internet service than I do here in Haywood County, and to emphasize that, I put in bold, let's remember, that was 11 years ago in a third world country. So nothing has happened for the last year and a half regarding the broadband committee. In summation, my questions are: Who's on first? Who's going to be our main contact? Because the state of North Carolina's broadband infrastructure offer is begging for somebody to report it to replace Mark Clasby. What, if anything, is being done? When's the next meeting? And who can we work with here on the commission? Because I'm going right next door to talk to Beverly Elliott to see if they can help us. Last thing I want to do is I want to offer appreciation to five people who've gotten us this far. That would be Mark Clasby, Joey Webb Jr., Keith Conover, who's with the state, Mike Sorrels, and Jim Blythe. So my main question is, who do I work with here to try and get this initiative started again? Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Okay, I'll close public comment. Let's see, on the broadband, David, you want to let us, I think you serve on the Economic Development Commission.
Broadband's one of the trickier things that I've run up to in a long time, and you know, what has happened is that the state of North Carolina took a lot of power away from the municipalities and counties to do, to own systems, to create systems, and so it's made it more difficult for us to move forward. The Economic Development Commission in 2017 commissioned a study, the county chipped in on that as well, too, and what that study showed is it would roughly be about $29 million to get a backbone system here connecting all the fire departments. So we've taken that study and worked with Commissioner Sorrels and Joey, and we, it's like, how do we do the funding? So what we did was we worked with NextGen, who's a company or a group coalition out of Asheville, and John Factor, Alderman in the town of Waynesville. And so we had our first meeting with NextGen, and Hotwire was interested in coming into the county. We explained our situation with Hotwire, they just didn't have the interest to come in here. What we find is that we're an extremely rural community. You know, we have broadband inside the city limits, and it gets, as Mr. Robertson's saying, it gets weaker as we go out in the community. So one of the things that we did this year as well, too, is that we looked, or sorry, last year, and this shows you the lack of interest here. At the 209 sewer project we're running there, we did an RFI, Request for Interest, with the broadband office, to where we can dig once, put the sewer line in, and put the fiber in there. We had zero interest from the service providers to run fiber down through there. So we've worked with that, worked with Hotwire. So one of the things that we've also, we've partnered up with the Southwest Commission to do a vertical asset inventory, you know, from church steeples to other cell towers here, to be able to do a fixed wireless program, because it seems to me with our rule that we may have to do more wireless type of communication as to putting fiber into the ground because of that expense, and it seems more technology's moving that way, and here's 5G coming. So that's one of the things that's happening there, so we've looked at that. Also, we are working on lighting up our community centers. Paragon Parkway, we installed outside of there, we went up to 100 users, can come to Paragon and have free Wi-Fi there. We're working on different other community centers, we have purchased the equipment, we are mobilizing as we can, air staff here at the county is doing that. We've had a little bit of turnover in the IT office as well, so we're behind on that project. So we're doing different things along, but it is just hard to cobble it all back together again, and it's just, you know, one of those things that we've got to keep working towards, and like I said, we're partnered with Southwest, we're working with NextGen, we're trying to get things moving, but it's just not happening because of the ruralness of our community. So we're trying to find solutions.
The Chamber's working on that through EDC at this time?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Yeah.
Is there still a franchise agreement with Charter in the county? I know when they first brought them in, they were able to pick what they... first brought them in, they were able to pick what they wanted. They wrote a franchise agreement, and I haven't heard anything about it in years. So I don't know if that's how they still operate?
The franchise agreements went away back, I forgot how many years ago now. Yeah, they went away.
Is there any way to entice them to take any of these on? Do we have any leverage whatsoever?
Joey and I met with Charter back in the spring of last year, and we've had that communication. You know, Joey might be able to speak a little bit more to some of that, but there's just not that interest because of the ruralness. You know, we've, we're talking to two other service providers as well, too. And one of those has also done a survey and where their pole attachments, they serve seven people as an average. In Haywood County, those pole attachments are two to three. So the return on investment, and this is a significant investment, $29 million, there, the service provider thought their investment would be between 13 to 16 million dollars to do that. And so, you know, the Smiths may sign up, but the Joneses may not sign up due to the cost of that monthly bill. So they just don't know what the return on investment would be. So, you know, other things that we could float out there would be, you know, how, we could, you know, partner with somebody with, you know, using, you know, county funds to help, you know, offset some of that return on investment. But those, you know, but we've just not gotten to that stage with either the service providers yet.
Frank, I know you serve on the HEMC board of directors. What are their challenges?
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm the attorney for HEMC, not on their board, but I advise their board. This issue has, has been a very high-profile issue for the electric membership cooperatives. Haywood EMC serves 26,000 meters in western North Carolina. They're, they're the electric service provider out in the county, away from the municipalities and away from where Duke or Carolina used to run their power lines. That's where your HEMC lines are. HEMC has seven meters per mile of its electric lines, okay? From its electrical distribution line, there's seven electrical connections in a mile in their system. They've looked at running broadband and hanging it on their poles. We can't do that as an electric utility. We're an electric utility. We're not a telecom provider. But we, we have been looking at partnering to extend broadband out to our electric customers because obviously everybody needs it. We have never been able, we've studied it, we've surveyed it, we've, they've done cost projections of the thing. We don't think we can get a take rate. A take rate is the, is the rate at which a customer will connect to a line that's out there at the street, okay? We've got seven electric meters per mile, and we calculated that, we didn't know exactly what our take rate was going to be. We thought we might get two per mile. You cannot, if they gave you the system, that is, if you got a government grant from the federal government, which is being talked about right this minute, about getting government grants to construct that line, you might be able to run it if you didn't have to pay anything for it with two connections per mile. But probably not. When you get out into the, you're certainly never going to have universal service the way we have universal service for electricity. The next issue is, technology has got everybody scared about hanging wire or fiber out on the pole or underground. They're scared that they're going to go, that the technology's going to leapfrog them, and they're going to end up with, that the, what the new technology's going to be wireless, over the air, like a cellphone. And that that's the way you'll get your wireless connectivity. Now, you can get that kind of wireless connectivity if you use, if you have a Verizon phone. Every one of us knows that you can, you can, the trouble is capacity and cost. So the issues are incredibly important. They're absolutely vital. It's not a surprise that developing rural countries have better internet service than the US does. They have less existing technology. And so when the technology goes down, it goes down focused on where people are, and they're not having to deal with what they call legacy costs or sunk costs. Everything's brand new. Put up a cell tower, you've got internet. And that, and so in the developing world, it's extremely common to find, Eastern Europe has far better, most of Eastern Europe, which is a developing world, has better internet service than the United States does. So those are not unusual situations to have. It's a very complicated issue being addressed multiple levels. Right now, we've got a federal initiative that's starting right now. We've got a new Congress coming in, and many of them have made that as an issue in their political campaigns. So there's going to see, you're going to see some action at the federal government level. That's probably going to come in the form of money. You may see some come from the state level. Many of the state legislative candidates in the last election were focusing on broadband out in the rural parts of the state. So there's going to be some initiative at the state level. The issue, friends, is money. And, and, and that's, and that's, it's just a, HEMC's looked at it. We couldn't figure out how to do it at all. We couldn't figure out how to do it at all. And, and we have, we're nimble. We can hire who we want. We don't have any limitations on government contracting or any of that stuff. We could be as aggressive and as high-tech as we wanted to be, and we couldn't figure out how to make it work yet. I mean, we're still looking. They're still looking. We've got active investigation.
We also looked at two grants from the Appalachian Regional Commission, and those grants were tailored to tier one counties, which are the most distressed counties in North Carolina. And unfortunately, you know, at the end of last year, we became, we stayed at tier three. We're two spots out of being a tier two county, but we're still, remained a tier three county. So we're in the same tier as Mecklenburg, Wake, Buncombe. They say our economy is just as well, and humming and buzzing along, just like those economies are. So we're not eligible, you know, for any of those grants or any of that assistance from, you know, a lot of, you know, different areas like that because we're not, we're not considered a distressed area, even though we're just as rural as some of the other counties that are a tier one.
You know, I'd like to make a comment. This came up back during the campaign, and it's been a hot button issue, you know, in, for recent years. And I appreciate Mr. Robertson's concern, but you could probably Google it. Mr. Queen touched on these folks being scared to death that technology's going to leapfrog them. It's, everybody checks to see how much money they've got in their hip pocket. And you don't want to get caught with some kind of outdated equipment. And these hard wires on these telephones, telephone poles, they're extremely, extremely expensive. And so back during the campaign, and I gave a couple of friends a little stock advice, you could probably Google it right now. SpaceX, they're doing private space flights from the Cape, servicing some, some things. And there's a private company out of California, and many of you maybe didn't know this, but there are like 400 communication satellites orbiting the earth right now in geosynchronous orbit. They're going to launch one in February that will, the one satellite will replace all 400 of those. This company's plan is to put three of these things in geosynchronous orbit so they can cover the whole world. And the speed on the internet connection wireless is phenomenal. It's phenomenal. So this technology's coming, and I'm sure there's a lot of people that's on the cutting edge that has insider trader information. I'd certainly be scared to death to be caught with a rotary dial telephone in my home knowing these things were coming. And, you know, there's some things coming with this broadband, and I understand everybody's concern. But I would invite you to explore that, Mr. Robertson, and maybe some others that's on this committee, and...
In the follow-up, Mr. Long, you know, one of the things that we've discussed and, you know, tried to figure out if we could make work, you know, is, you know, purchasing hotspots, you know, through Verizon. And then, because one thing we, nobody can get away from is a monthly bill from that. Monthly bill for electricity, monthly bill for, you know, water, sewer, is if we purchase the hotspots and, and, you know, gave those out and then, and hopefully, you know, work out a deal with Verizon or Charter or somebody in that neighborhood. We've just been discussing that, kicking it around, because that's certainly a lot less money than $29 million, you know, to build. And that would be a cheaper, and they, you know, so we're trying to find little steps along the way to fix, because there's just no way that we can take these big, huge steps without having a partner in Haywood EMC, a partner in Charter, a partner in ERC. And, you know, and everybody's a little bit worried about stepping outside of the municipal boundaries. You know, because we've talked to two service providers about going out. AT&amp;T, you know, has got, with under their, they agreed to part of the FCC agreement. So they've done a little bit of work outside of, in Lake Joe Alaska and a couple of places like that, and extending some lines. But nothing else, you know, there. And then I don't know if they are fulfilling everything that they're supposed to be doing with the, with their agreement with the FCC about, you know, extending outside the municipalities. But I know they did complete that at Lake Joe Alaska, you know, sometime last year.
Okay. Again, Skyrunner's also another good wireless company that's out there. I know they're, they're really fast, the internet speeds are, if you can get them in your area. And I know they're, they're expanding. I know Brandon talked with them. They're wanting to expand into Bethel, I think you said, Brandon. And so that's another solution, you know, that you can do. So, you know, it's okay. You just have one question?
Yeah, I just have one question, which is my first question. It's very thick, I'm on it. Who is it that I would deal with, I'd like to follow up on Mr. Long's suggestion. Who is it that I would deal with? The state wants to work with us. Who would I talk to here?
Okay. Okay. Does anybody have any other comments on this? Okay. We'll move on to constituent concerns. Tommy, do you have any? Brandon?
I do have one item, and I'll be getting with county manager after the meeting to talk about it.
Eric?
Yeah, I did have a constituent concern this past week. I met with a lady, and she actually watches our meetings on television, but she said she had a difficult time hearing everybody but me. So if everybody could speak up and speak actually into the microphone. No, she really did say that. But if you do speak into the microphone, people can hear you out there. And I know the folks here have a difficult time hearing the few people that stand up here. You really have to be diligent about speaking into this so that folks can hear us.
Mark, you okay? Okay. All right, good. Okay, administrative agency reports. We have our county manager, and we have some new county employees. Brian's going to introduce.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll say your name. Please stand and remain standing until I finish. At Health and Human Services, we have Chinoa Tracy Stone, Tara Blevins, Connie Green, Laura Metcalf, Stacy Ree, Rebecca Onder. Developmental Services, we have Mary Massey. Sheriff's Office, we have Miriam Forbes. Register of Deeds, Cassandra Farmer. And Soil and Water, Donna Fielden. These are our new county employees. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Thank y'all for wanting to work for the county, and we welcome y'all. And y'all are new blood, so I hope y'all stay a long time and everything. So we try to take this time to honor, we haven't done this in the past, and Joel Mashburn started us doing this, and I think it's a good thing that we're, we can see you. A lot of times, we don't know who our employees are, you know, because there's a lot of employees. So it's good to have y'all aboard. So thank y'all. And y'all can return to work if you, if you need to, or you can stay. Okay. All right. Thank y'all for coming, though. Okay, we'll move on to our discussion, adjustment of agenda. I don't really have anything. Does anybody have any thing they need? Okay. Under our consent agenda, I want to request the approval of our December 17 regular meeting and special meeting minutes. Has everybody read those? And does anyone have any corrections or, or comments or additions? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to request approval of the audit contract extension through December 31st. Our finance director, Julie Davis. Hey, Julie?
Good morning. What you have for approval is a very short extension of the audit contract. The original contract was to go through October 31st, which is when our audit is typically due. This year, it ran a little longer due to some reporting that we had to get from an actuarial. So the report didn't actually come to us till the end of December. So we are extending the contract. There's no additional fee, but we're extending the contract through December to be in compliance with our local government commission.
Anybody have any questions about that? Okay, we'll move on to the approval of the budgets and budget amendments from the general fund, Julie?
I've got two budget amendments, both of them from Health and Human Services. The first one is actually a combination of two grants from the United Way of Haywood County. It's a $10,220 to the Maple Leaf Adult Daycare Center, and $20,000 to Meals on Wheels. And we're putting those into our budget for the revenue and the expenses to show where we're going to be spending that money.
Okay.
I'd be glad to answer any questions about that if I can.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Okay, the next one is Health and Human Services. This is a health department. This is actually money sent back to the county from the Medicaid cost settlements. This is $371,213 that's coming back to the county after our, our health department has sent reports to the state, and the state has determined that through multiple programs that we have, we are getting some Medicaid money back to the county. And when we get the money back, it has to go back to those programs that we initially sent in, in the original report. So these are spread across some, some of our health departments, and a large portion of it is at our dental, our dental department.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with Julie about that issue? Okay. Thank you, Julie.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, under old business, we've got one, three items. The first item would be the request consideration of two occupancy tax penalty waiver request. And we spoke about this last time. And Lynn, do you have any new information that you want to offer?
Good morning, commissioners. Well, I can just provide you with a little bit of additional information, and maybe that will be helpful in, in your decision-making. You know, some of the normal types of penalty waiver requests that we do approve have, have to do with, with the payments being actually stamped by the US Postal Service when they come in. They're due on the 20th day of the month. And since the mail sorting facility in Asheville has been closed down now, everything goes through Greenville. And since that happened, since that took place, we're seeing that a lot of the mail is not getting postmarked at all. So a lot of these payments come in without any postmark on them. So it's hard to determine if they come, you know, if they're actually on time or not. So we have stressed to our accommodations owners that, you know, if they're running late and they're actually mailing it, you know, right at the last day possible, that they need to physically take that to the post office and stand there and make sure it gets postmarked. So a lot of our, our penalty waiver requests are because of postmarks. Another item is if there's a hurricane or a flood or something like that, and a property owner has to evacuate during that timeframe, then that's usually an allowable excuse as far as waiving a penalty. And then also, you, we've had circumstances where there have been some long-term medical issues, and people have had to travel for medical treatment elsewhere or something like that as a property owner. And, and that has been excused. But just for, you know, staff turnover, equipment breakdown, you know, things of that nature, those have not normally been allowable excuses for a penalty waiver. So aside from that, that's about all I can offer, I think, unless Julie has anything else on that?
No, I think that was good. You explained it all.
You explained it all.
Okay. I used to actually have some seasonal rentals where I collected a tax, and I always knew to send it in, and that had to be sent in. Actually, if you don't collect, some months I didn't collect a tax, and I still had to send in a voucher.
That's correct. You have to sign it in with a zero.
Yeah, just put zero on it, you know, and I was always like grumbling about that, but I had to do that, so.
Right. And I mean, they do have 20 days to get it in, so.
Right, yeah, that's true. Okay. But anyway, so your request was to, I guess I was confused on how we should vote on it. So your, your request was not to waive it, was what your board approved?
That's what they recommended.
Recommended, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah. So your board recommended that we not approve waiving this tax?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have?
And that was the majority, right, or?
Yes.
Board. Yeah, I think I had some questions last time. I mean, to me, it sounded like the, the reason they were late was legit, but if in the past you've not waived those requests, then it seems fit to only not do it this time as well, so. And I respect the board's recommendation as well, so.
I had orientation with TDA because that's, I have never been on that board, and I'm on that board at this point. And it appeared to me, we had a discussion about it, and it did appear to me that they thoroughly reviewed these, and they, actually, the reason that the, the payments were missed or they did not make the payments was, was based on the operation of an entity. And every, every entity has to be ready for changes that could occur, but still, you know, make their payments and pay their bills. And so that is one of the reasons that they decided not to waive it. And I think they thought through it pretty thoroughly, so I'm convinced at this time that I'm, will not approve of the request for the waiver.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay. Okay, so, all right. So would someone, I see, so can we offer a, a motion to not approve the tax penalty wa- waiver?
So moved.
Is that correct? Is that, okay. So Brandon made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, Lynn.
Okay, the next item of old business is to request the approval of the option to sell the historic hospital with Landmark Asset Services, Inc., in the amount of $225,000 for purchase of the old historic Haywood County Hospital.
Commissioners, is that better, Joey? The, at the last meeting, we talked about this option, and one of the things that I came away with was trying to make it cleaner and simpler and address the concerns that Mr. Pless had about the lease for the Haywood County school system. And so Mr. Queen and I sat down, and I think he did an outstanding job of making it a lot easier to read, you know, like, you know, we took out, sometimes, sometimes lawyers get in the way of being, you know, making it easy for us laypersons. But I think Mr. Queen heard us loud and clear, and, you know, this document's totally different than the last one, and, you know, if you have any questions about that. But again, this was the, the option to, you know, for a landmark asset to take over the hospital. And so there's, they would have till September of 2015, or, excuse me, September 15th of 2019, there's so many dates in this thing, 2019, to exercise the option for the hospital. What that would give them time is if the North Carolina Housing Finance Tax Credits come through, they usually come through in mid-August, sometimes late August, that gives them enough time to get everything together, to start the package, but then we would have a closing up to September of 2020. Okay? They have two dates in there that they would give us $7,000 for each time we extend, extend those dates. The one thing about the lease is with, with the school system, it is a 10-year renewal. Okay? And the odd thing about it is, it doesn't have a 60-day notice, doesn't have a 90-day notice, it doesn't have a 120-day notice. So, so what we put in there is that if soon as, you know, Landmark exercises the option, that we would give the school system notice of, of terminating the lease. So that would, you know, in theory, put it out about 15, 16 months ahead of time. And as, you know, Mr. Moorhead, you know, we were having those discussions, because one of the things that, between the county and the school system, we got a lot of buildings that we, we need to figure out what we're going to do with. You know, we have the hospital, we have the building across the street, Annex Two, we have Annex One, we have the Armory, and we have Central, Crabtree. So we have a lot of buildings that we need to discuss and put in the mix of how we're addressing, you know, those older buildings, how we're going to put those back to use. So Mr. Moorhead and Dr. Nolte are beginning those discussions here shortly as well, too. So, you know, like I said, I've, you know, talked to the school system, you know, ahead of time about this, and they, you know, they understand, you know, what was coming with the option as well, too. Any questions?
I do. What do we do with the school? I know the last time when we were talking, you had said that you would take care of putting the school somewhere. If I read this correctly, we still have to figure out what to do with them. We're still under the same timetable of two years. Is that correct in what I'm reading?
Did, did I hear you correctly in saying that we was, the first part of it, I didn't hear?
Whenever you were here the last time and we were discussing back and forth, you said that lease on the school system, you would take the lease and relocate the school system.
I said that we would take the lease and allow them to remain throughout the lease, not that we would relocate them after.
So we're still going to be responsible for putting them somewhere in two years?
Well, per the lease, once it runs out, I don't think it ties anybody to the responsibility for moving the school system. It just says that we were.
Do I understand at our end of contract with the school system that we are still responsible for them?
No.
How does that work?
This, this is the issue with, with the school system. You know, they have a lease on that building up through 2020, and so they, and, and that was the agreement that we would lease them that property up through that time. At that point in time, we have no obligation to provide them a place for administrative offices. However, and we have no legal obligation, however, they don't have the money to renovate or build a facility for an administrative office. So irregardless of whether we have the legal liability, we're, we're going to have some obligation to work with them at that point in time, or at some point in time, to assist them with administrative offices, wherever that may be.
So this is just going to speed the process up of having to figure out what to do with them. There's not the option to do another 10 years in the, in the building, in the shape that everyone says it's in.
Well, and I think that's the issue. They, I don't believe that they want to stay there another 10 years.
Right.
So I, I think we're, we're left with this issue either way, whether we're legally left with the issue for the next two years or after that, if we have an obligation to them, because they don't have the money to construct an administrative office. And so then it gets to the point of, okay, what kind of administrative office do you have, and where is it? Is it one of your existing buildings? Is it a new building? And how much money do we supply? And that's, that's where the discussion, I guess, takes place.
That's what we've got to figure out.
The school system, and the school system has, you know, relayed to me that they wish to vacate the hospital.
So regardless of what we do, we're going to end up having to do something with them?
Right. That, that's my opinion, anyway.
Yeah, and I'll also say, we've been discussing this for several years, I don't know how many, five or six years, and the school system, I think we're the only county in the state that provides a building for administrative offices for the school. I think I remember.
There's something that's been talked about that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, so we're, we're already kind of out front of most counties on, on what we do, so assisting them will be above and beyond what most counties do, I guess is what I'm saying, even though they, they don't have a taxing authority, but, you know, that's just the way it kind of, it was just, that's why it's explained to me along this, along this time also, so. But we, we do want to take care of our school system and assist them in trying to find a building, like Kirk was saying. And we've just not probably, I think we've kind of looked, but not really, we need to really start being serious about finding them a space.
Back in, let's say, 15, 16, somewhere right in there, we did, you know, start working about Annex Two, which is the Medical Arts Building right across the street, about locating them there. And they felt at that time that that didn't meet their needs. So we've been, you know, we've looked at, you know, expanding somewhere down in Claude. We've looked at a couple of options that they had us look at as well, too. But we've, you know, not had any much further discussions than just those ideas coming out, but we didn't, we've not put plans in paper or spent any architectural fees or anything like that at this point.
I, I think, Mr. Chairman, that probably we have a work session coming up on February 1st, and this is one of the items, as well as our other assets that we have, if you want to call them assets, would be a, a good thing to talk about at that work session.
Yeah, it would.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I was going to actually suggest the same thing. You know, we've got the Armory as well. I know, being on the rec board, that's been discussed in the last couple of meetings, so I think all this will be fitting to discuss it during our, our work session, so.
Yeah, what's the changes? You'll find out whether you get your grant money by September 19th. Pretty good, I mean?
They, they announced awards August of 19.
If you'll speak into that microphone. I've got a constituent that wants to be able to hear what you're saying.
Yes, sir. NCHFA announces awards in August, so we will know in August whether, whether the hospital received a tax credit award for the construction of affordable housing.
You know, being a new commissioner, I, I didn't say at the beginning, but as far as constituent concerns, I had a couple of comments, and some people called, but I've re-arrested this thing over, and I know the incumbent commissioners have, they've dealt with this thing for many years. And something interesting came up, back in 1926, the Marshall family sold that piece of property to the Haywood County Hospital Board of Trustees to construct a hospital in 1927. And going over the old documents, it was very interesting to me that my grandfather was on the Haywood County Hospital Board of Trustees, the original one. And I didn't know that, but he had signed those documents, and so I kind of got a little skin in this game, and that was a good building. You know, you pull up some old pictures, and that was a really good building in 1927. My dad was actually born in that building in 1929. He's still alive today. So, you know, here I am 92 years later, after my, my grandfather initiated building the first publicly funded hospital in the state of North Carolina with the task of voting to sell this building. So I think that's kind of interesting, kind of a little interesting history. And also, I think he'd probably be pleased to see that we tried to do something with it to do some common good for the people, and that's affordable housing. So it's sitting up there. I had some people kind of toss around about the $7,000 a month fee that's costing us. Well, you know, I get sworn in in December, and don't throw that on my back, you know, you've heard the expression, swallow a mule and choke on a gnat? Well, the mule, the mule's already been swallowed over the last seven or eight years, okay? And I'm not going to choke on a gnat over the next few months to try to get this program going on, so, you know, I'm not going to be the one to choke on the gnat, because the mule's already been swallowed over the years. My predecessors, you know, this, this task that's before us, so. That's my two cents, Mr. Chairman. I hope I spoke into the microphone.
That's good. That's good, that's right. Yeah, there'll be several building, this is one of the building projects we'll have to look at at our work session. I think the jail probably needs to be expanded, and we, we've talked endlessly about remodeling the old, the library in Waynesville. So we've got some construction projects that during that work session, we'll be able to talk about.
One other note, Mr. Chairman, Waynesville had a hospital that went bankrupt in 1922. So hospitals have already had, they've already always been some economic problems with hospitals in 1922. Canton had a hospital subsidized by the, the paper mill. Waynesville had four doctors that served in World War I, and my grandfather served in World War I. He wasn't a doctor, but I think these people got together, got their heads together and saw something that the county needed. The county people, from what I can read from historical documents, they felt like they were kind of getting left out. And, you know, so interesting history about that building. Didn't want to take up your time, Mr. Chairman, but that is some interesting history.
No, it is interesting.
You have been doing some good reading there, Mr. Long.
Yeah, it is interesting.
Yeah, I was, I was actually born in that hospital, too, so I guess most of us were, yeah. Brandon was, in the back part, not in the old part.
1930?
Yeah, no. It was a new part when I got born, was born, got born, it don't sound right. Anyway, okay. So I guess, can we have a motion to approve the option to sell the historic hospital to Landmark Asset Services? Would someone offer that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in, in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, the second item will be a resolution to approve the initiation of adaptive reuse of the old hospital.
What we did, as I explained at the last meeting, we partnered with the town of Waynesville for a redevelopment project area. John has spent a lot of time with the town of Waynesville getting that parameters worked. And it's said that the hospital is owned by the county, but the surrounding municipalities, the town of Waynesville. So this, what this resolution does is encourage the redevelopment project of that area, and it gives the, for John, when he's making his application, that the folks down the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency sees that the county and the town are working together on the redevelopment project area. Is that summing up the best what? Okay. So, so this is what that resolution, that resolution does is, you know, to basically join the entities together to work together on the redevelopment area for, project for the hospital. Okay. Would you like for me to read this in?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Resolution by the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners of initiation of adaptive reuse of old hospital building. Whereas, North Carolina General Statute 153A-378 authorizes and gives certain powers to the counties in North Carolina for affordable housing, and whereas, Haywood County is committed to developing safe, convenient, accessible, efficient, affordable housing for low and moderate income households, and whereas, Haywood County Board of County Commissioners has sought to find an adaptive reuse of the historic Haywood County Hospital located at 1230 North Main Street in Waynesville, North Carolina, for affordable housing and to maintain the historic preservation of the hospital building, the old hospital building, which became the first county-operated hospital in North Carolina in 1927, and whereas, the old hospital building is on the National Register of Historic Places and is a valued part of our community history, and whereas, designation of the old hospital building as a redevelopment area could facilitate the rehabilitation of the site for affordable housing, and whereas, the Haywood County desires to partner with the town of Waynesville to provide opportunities for affordable housing to the citizens of Haywood County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Haywood County Board of County Commissioners does hereby officially encourage the town of Waynesville to initiate the adaptive reuse of the old hospital building as described above as a redevelopment project under Section 2B2 of the 2019 Qualified Action Plan, or QAP, of the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency adopted this day.
Thank you, David. I didn't want to have to read that, I'm glad you did.
You know, before, we had, you know, Kirk's one has singing voice to do a lot of that, so I.
I was going to ask.
Mine's a very poor replacement, I apologize for that, you know. Joey says he can't hear me, and everybody else says I'm gravelly, so we'll have to, so, yeah, so. So, and part of this tomorrow night, John and I are before the town board, the town of Waynesville Board tomorrow night, proceeding this resolution as part of their public hearing.
Okay. Okay, will someone offer a motion to approve the resolution that David just read, which is the initiation of adaptive reuse of the old hospital at 1230 North Main Street?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, our first item of new business will be to request approval of amended Articles of Association and Agreement for the Southwestern Workforce Development Consortium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Southwestern Commission administers the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act for Haywood County and the seven other counties that make up the Southwestern Commission. Part of the agreement is that someone has to be designated as the chief elected official. Commissioner Sorrells filled that role. With his term expiring, we have to appoint another. Everyone at the Southwestern Commission has. Everyone at the Southwestern Commission has recommended, from Macon County, Commissioner Gary Shields to serve as chief elected official. This agenda item is just to certify that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to request approval of the amended articles of association and agreement for the Southwestern Workforce Development Consortium. Will someone make that motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Right. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, the second item of new business is to request the donation of twenty-five hundred dollars for the Welcome Home Meal on February ninth, 2019, for soldiers and families of the Two Hundred and Tenth Military Police Company of North Carolina Army National Guard. And we have, is, okay, we have the Veterans Council, WNC Chair Lynn Lazar?
Lynn Lazar, yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. The Two Tenth Military Police Company of the Army National Guard deployed to Cuba. They were gone nearly a year. Last year, the Veterans Council did a pre-deployment meal for the veterans and their, for the soldiers and their families, the Sunday after Thanksgiving. They returned on October sixth from their deployment, and we are hosting them and their family members for a Welcome Home Meal. They were gone from end of, end of November through early October, part of that time in Texas for training, and the rest of that time serving in Cuba. And their family members were without them during that time through the Christmas holidays, and, and there are six members of the Two Tenth who list Haywood County as their home of record. And I have approached the county commissioners from the seven western counties and also the eastern band to raise money for this. We are planning for about six hundred people at this dinner. I'm still trying to get my numbers settled, but they're doing a welcome home ceremony. So there'll be some, some of the National Guard members from Raleigh who'll be here to welcome them home. And we would like to thank not only the soldiers, but their family members who were without them during that time.
Where will you, where will you have the dinner?
The dinner will be at Southwestern Community College in their Burl Building.
Okay.
And that is where we held the pre-deployment meal as well. And we have, we've secured that location, and we will, we'll have to move in tables and chairs. They usually don't have quite enough space for that, so we'll be actually borrowing tables and chairs from the guard in order to put more, more seating in there. I would also like to invite the commissioners to come out and, and welcome those soldiers and their family members home. I'll get you a formal invitation.
Thank you.
It's February ninth.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Lynn? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the donation of twenty-five hundred dollars for the Welcome Home Meal on February ninth, for the soldiers and family members of the Two Tenth Military Police Company of North Carolina Army National Guard.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We appreciate you be willing to do this also. That's, that's good. Okay, the third item of new business will be to request approval of the resolution honoring Lieutenant Don Robertson for twenty-six years of law enforcement service, awarding his issued badge and sidearms. We have our Chief Deputy, Jeff Hayes. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you, and what I bring before you this morning is to present a resolution to you, the Commissioners, allowing the transfer of the service weapon and the badge to Lieutenant Don Robertson after twenty-six years of service to Haywood County. Don actually goes out February first, and, but we certainly want to honor him as we do all those who've retired and committed their, their professional life to public service. So the resolution reads as such, whereas Lieutenant Don Robertson joined the Haywood County Sheriff's Office on twenty-five January nineteen ninety-three as a deputy sheriff, and held the rank of deputy sheriff, sergeant, and lieutenant within both Uniform Patrol Division, and he also served as a team commander of the Sheriff's Emergency Response Team as well, which is our countywide special response team. Whereas Lieutenant Robertson's service and dedication to the Haywood County Sheriff's Office, and also service and dedication and accomplishments in the field of law enforcement during those twenty-six years, the service are hereby recognized and commended. And whereas, under North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two, provides the retiring officers of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office to receive at the time of retirement the badge worn or carried by them during that service for Haywood County. And whereas, North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eight, one-eight-seven-two further provides the Haywood County Board of Commissioners in its discretion to award the retiring officer the service sidearm of such officer at the price determined by the Board of Commissioners upon securing a handgun permit as required by North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash four oh two. Whereas Lieutenant Robertson has served as a member of the Haywood County Sheriff's Office and is retiring from the Haywood County Sheriff's Office on one February two thousand nineteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the Haywood County Board of Commissioners as follows, Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance with the provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two, allowing transfer to Lieutenant Robertson the badge worn by him during the service for the, with the Haywood County Sheriff's Office. And also Sheriff Greg Christopher is hereby authorized in accordance with provisions of North Carolina General Statute twenty-one eighty-seven point two, allowing transfer to Lieutenant Robertson his service sidearm at no cost to Lieutenant Robertson upon securing a handgun permit as required under North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash four oh two. Be it further resolved, the Haywood County Board of Commissioners recognizes and thanks Lieutenant Don Robertson for his dedication, dedicated service to Haywood County and its citizens. This adopted the seventh day of January two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Don, I think, I've seen him out, sometimes he kind of watched over our meetings for us, so. I hate to hear him that he's retiring, but I'm, I'm glad he was able to, to do that.
Absolutely. He, he is actually taking care of a lot of vacation time and so forth, so he's, he hasn't been, hasn't been here in a little while, but February first is his last day. And for the record, I would like to say, he, he served under me as well, too, when I was team commander of our special response team, as one of my team leaders, and you will not find a more honorable gentleman to serve the citizens of Haywood County, so I personally would like to thank him as well.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the resolution honoring Lieutenant Don Robertson for twenty-six years of law enforcement service, and by awarding his issued badge and sidearm?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the next item of new business is to request approval amendments to the Haywood County Fairgrounds bylaws. And Tommy, did you?
Well, by virtue of being on the Commissioner Board, I was appointed to serve on the Fairgrounds Committee. The Fairgrounds Committee in the fall appointed a board to review the bylaws and make changes. Stephanie Parkins, Ben Wilder, and Dorothy Morris served on that committee, and they brought forth this recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to approve these changes in the bylaws. The major changes were clarification of terms of service for board members, and that staggered terms will create continuity and new perspective. Combined the vice chair and secretary position into one. Deleted the treasurer that should be bonded mainly because two signatures are required on all checks that are written, and there's dual control over the money. Added new article specific to the annual Haywood County Fair to assure future boards shall hold at least one annual fair, and that the Haywood County Fairgrounds Board shall have control over exhibits. They added an article describing the Fairgrounds Coordinator, a new position approved by the board due to increased work and demand at the fairgrounds, which is a paid part-time position without benefits. They identified committees and their respective roles, and updated the manager title to director, which adds clarity to the scope of work for the current position as well as a new position, in concluding the documents. So that's the request.
Okay. And I was, of course, had served on the board up till the election. I appreciate Tommy taking that board on. And we had worked on this, you know, there comes times when you just need to update your bylaws, and that's what we did, and I appreciate Stephanie and the committee members that, that did that, because that's always a big undertaking. You've got to make sure that things are kind of current. And the Fairgrounds is growing, she's almost rented, rented the facility almost the whole year. And so, and just for everybody to know, the Fairgrounds is, is, are run by a, it's a nonprofit board that runs the Fairgrounds, and they, through the rents, they're able to pay for the heating bill, the electric bill, the water bill, and to have it mowed, the mowing, and several other things, improvements. We try to always make improvements to the, to the, to the Fairgrounds. And there's a lot of people, put a lot of hours of volunteer out there, and I appreciate everyone that does that, I want to say that. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the amendments to the Haywood County Fairgrounds bylaws. Would someone make that motion?
I'm making motion to amend the bylaws as recommended by the committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's unanimous. Okay, the fifth item of new business is to request approval appointment of Edward Merritt to the Library Board of Trustees. We have our library director, Kathy, Kathy Vossler here this morning. Thank you. Welcome, Kathy.
Good morning. The Library Board of Trustees and I are seeking approval from the Commissioners for the addition of Edward Merritt to the board for a three-year term. Library Board Chairman, Lorraine de Whaley, and I interviewed Ed Merritt along with two other applicants, and presented our preference at the December nineteenth Board of Trustees meeting. Edward Merritt has been coming to North Carolina for years and bought a home in Waynesville three years ago. He's retired as a business management professor from California State University in Paloma prior to his move to North Carolina. On his application for appointment on why he would like to serve on the library board, Ed stated, "I have successfully served on a number of boards and committees. I bring a balanced and thoughtful perspective to boards and look forward to serving." His past and current community involvement includes Christian Ministries, Rotary, the Chamber of Commerce, and Sarges. In our interview with him, Ed let us know that he reads about fifty books per year, and he visits the library three times per week. He still prefers to hold a regular old book in his hands as opposed to reading electronically. He and his wife attended a number of library programs in 2018. Ed stated that he has no preconceived ideas about the needs and/or future of the library, but he is aware that a forty-year-old building may be in need of a renovation or rebuilding. Ed was involved with a large library renovation at Cal Poly, and recognizes the need for open-use internet, quiet study areas, open spaces for chatting, and HVAC systems with micro controls. Ed is also the author of eight books, including his latest, Leadership and Strategy: Understanding, Planning, and Implementing, which was published in 2017. Ed believes the library is the heart and the soul of a community, and we feel that he would bring a very thoughtful and balanced approach to our library board.
Okay. It always amazes me, people that live in our community and what their backgrounds are.
Yes.
You know, and especially on the library board, you got, you, you always have great applicants, so I'm glad you've found another great one, so. Okay. So anybody have any questions of Kathy?
I don't have any questions, but just reviewing the applicants, I mean, appeared that there was three outstanding applicants that they interviewed, and, and as I've been part of the library board, the entire library board does not interview the applicants, so they, they have a committee that reviews the applicants and then makes a recommendation to the board, and the board was unanimous on approving this person.
Okay, is there any other comments?
Nice to have three applicants.
It is. It's wonderful.
Sure is. Okay. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the appointment of Edward Merritt to the Library Board of Trustees.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signal aye by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last item of new business will be announcement of board commissioners' work session on February first, 2019, beginning at ten a.m. in the Health and Human Service Agency Training Room at one fifty-seven Parkway, Paragon Parkway. We, this, this will be part of kicking off the budget year, and did you have anything to add to it, Bryant?
Only, I'll, I'll be putting together an agenda, and I'll email you, you guys to get some ideas for other things you'd like to talk about at the, at the budget planning session.
Just let Bryant know if there's things you want to talk about, and we can put that on the agenda. This is a good kickoff, and, and we being a new board, we want to definitely hit the ground running, and this will be, give guidance to the staff on what we want to see in the budget, as well as what projects that we can examine on, on the upcoming year. Okay, and I guess we're just announcing that, we don't have to approve that, do we? Okay. Yeah, we're just going, okay. Okay, that concludes, that's all our business that we have on our agenda. Does anybody have anything else that we need to? Okay. Okay, hearing, hearing that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.